So we're starting a little bit early this evening for an interview for an open position. We have my saint hero, is that correct? We have Linda Hero in front of us. Thank you for taking your time out of your day to talk to the council and thank you for your interest in this position. What I think will happen is that we will interview Linda, answer any questions that she may have, take a couple of minutes before it will pause and then come back to the regular meeting at seven o'clock. So Linda, to you again, thank you for taking a moment. Tell us please a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in the position and why you think you'd be a good fit for it? Why you think you'd be a good fit for it?
Well, I have some experience being a community activist. I have some interest, some experience being a activist. I lived in Cranston for 32 years and I spearheaded a community beautification organization. I got a 501(c)(3) status. I'm familiar with writing grants and I live at Benjamin Church Manor. And as I walk around, I see things that I would like to see a little bit different. And so I brought the attention of the director Candy. And two things that came to mind were helping to clear some of the debris for the creek. And then we went on to straightening the stone wall. So two ideas are on the table with Candy and I thought maybe it would make a difference if I could officially be part of something that might make a difference and help us get it accomplished. We talked to Mr. Tanner, talked to the EM, et cetera, et cetera. On my project that I worked, I, that I spearheaded, I raised $165,000 to do a four-point project. Railroad Bridge, flowers, a park that was loaded with glass and stuff. I had a working relationship with the ACI so that I could save on labor, things like that I learned. So I thought maybe my ability with that might make a difference in how money is acquired for small projects that would make a difference, whether it's beautification or fixing something. So that's where I'm coming from. I live at Benjamin Church. I've been there for 11 years and I used to live on Franklin Street. And I think Bristol is more than a place to live, takes frame of mind. And I think it's something that I'd like to see, I'd like to take part in something to make a difference.
So wow. Bristol is a frame of mind. I really like that. I think we're going to use that. So you hit a couple of points that I thought were outstanding. Could you tell us a little bit more? Let me ask you this. I think what you've said so far, you'd be, so far, you'd be a perfect fit for this position. But with your grant experience, maybe we could convince you to be part of other things too. If, because I'll tell you what, that is, we have found a lot of success with grant writing, but it's, it's always a work in progress. So it sounds like you've, you've done an outstanding job with that.
My first grant that I, and I never did any of this before. I stood in the middle of a field with a friend and we said, wouldn't it be nice if this was something different? I started asking questions. I found out who owned railroad bridge. I went to Manhattan to meet the station master, asked me what to do with different things, what I could do with different things. And it all started over a cup of coffee. And when I approached the EM, I, I got a grant for $10,000 and I was awarded that somewhere in Newport. And then I met other people who worked on other projects and I not only got the project to fruition, but I met lots of friends. And it was not just a learning experience, but it was a journey. And I'm not saying I'm an expert at it, but I have had success with writing grants because I know what they look for. And because I had working relationships with people in the city planning office in Cranston, the ACI to help save on labor, DEM helping with things, landscapers and things like that. I, I felt good because I could select who I wanted to do the work. I didn't have to bid it out to someone and take bottom dollar. And I didn't have to pay tax on anything because of 501(c)(3) status. But as I went along, it took 14 years altogether to implement the idea, get permission to do things, do the grant writing, do the project, finish the project. And then when my husband passed away, I left Cranston and I gave the project back to the city and they have perpetual care. So every once in a while I ride by just to make sure everything's okay.
Nice. Outstanding answers. Colleagues?
I think it's, you know, terrific what you've done. What part of Cranston was this part?
Oakdale Village, historic part, the oldest, had a lot of history and other history.
Yeah, well, there's plenty, there's no shortage of projects here in Bristol, that's for sure. That could use people that are anxious to make change, so.
Well, there's always opposition. But the, the bike path alone, I was able to get the bike path to come to Cranston on the old railroad bit. And I used to come over here three nights, we can use this one. I said, why do I have to do that? We got a different place here. There's a lot of opposition for that. But one of the rewarding things was through understanding and what they had now and what they were going to have when it was done, I persuaded a few people to turn over their idea about opposing it and supporting it. So it was kind of nice.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for applying.
With that, yes. Yes. Would that be a, how receptive have, have they been there with some of the ideas? You mentioned two ideas specifically, the wall and cleaning the book. How receptive have they been with your suggestions?
Well, we haven't formally suggested anything. We just talked with Candy and she told us to get some ideas. But you know, Scott, what happens? People see you doing something and say, what are you doing? And we're not ready to bring it to the rest of the committee yet. And I wasn't even a member, so I was just kind of helping with different things. Rick is my friend and we were talking, he is on the committee. So we were hoping to get to have some, we want to restore the stone wall because there's rats there and there's snakes and it's falling apart. And we wanted to fix it because it is a piece of history. But sometimes things can't be fixed. So if we can't afford and raise enough money to fix the stone wall at Benjamin Church, maybe a fence could be done or something else. But these are just ideas. We don't have anything to bring to the table yet because a couple of people haven't shown up for things. And there are a couple of people say, well, I like the stone wall. I said, I love the stone wall. I used to build them with my dad. But sometimes when it's falling all over and you've got seniors walking and it's not very good ground to walk on, you might need to do something else to correct it. So there's a little bit of opposition from a couple of members, but they really don't have any information on what we're trying to do. It's just their opinion. So already it's a stumbling block, block for, but Candy asked us to get some quotes. I'm amazed at how many people in the business don't want to come back. And our next step was to talk to the city to see if there was any people, there were any people that would like to take on a project of restoring the wall that wasn't part of a big corporation and had all this overhead thing. Like somebody that may do it for a living and might want to just help to restore it just because it's what it is.
Well, even some of the students, like they do give that little grant down at Roger Williams you can apply for. And maybe that could be a student project, like in preservation or something like that in the fall that could help do it and get someone of the masonry people around to kind of oversee it and give you guidance on how to do that.
I had some students from URI helping me with the types of flowers because what we tried to do is because Oakdale Village was the oldest historic place in Cranston. We tried to freeze spring in the 1900s, found out what kind of flowers would have been growing, what trees they would have had, you know, access to and things like that. And we had a working relationship with URI. I went there to be a tree steward so I better understood what I was talking about. And it was nice because everybody was enthused about doing it. The residents couldn't have been happier because they didn't have to stay in their cell. They went out and built the foundation for the gazebo.
Right now, where were, now what were you in your profession? Were you a teacher or?
I ran a daycare in my home for 32 years. I was an assistant teacher here at Gold Canvales in the terrace with the foster grand car program.
So you're just like, you're active all the time?
Rather.
Yeah. That'd be that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for stepping up to the plate. Besides your fantastic grant writing skills, which it seems like you've got that, the secret sauce of writing those grants, which I love. You also talked about your networking skills, which I really, really liked and I'm homing in on that. So besides the wall project, what other like positive or ineffective ways would you do down there to get tenants more to participate? To learn more about what are, what other things need to get done besides that?
We haven't done anything there. Another thing we're trying to do that would be better for a lot of the seniors that live there is to get another coin, another laundry.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have to walk up to the office. I mean, I don't pay with it, a lot of them aren't. And they, they went from points to cards. So that's one project that we really love to see happen.
And I'm sorry, you said, you said it was laundry, just to be clear. Did you say laundry?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have laundry at the lower end. And then there's a laundry room by the office.
Okay.
And the office is the only place that has the card. So whenever you run out of money, a lot of the seniors don't run there.
That's too bad.
And get money on their card so they can wash the laundry. And we're hoping to be able to have a meeting with them and, and get their input as to how comfortable it might be to have a laundry card machine at the other laundry.
Oh, yeah, especially when, when it blows cold in the winter, you want to make sure we have.
That's more of a necessity than like a beautification.
Oh, yeah. That's one of the biggest issues I hear from people that are thinking about where they might want to apply is just that they have to drag their laundry out to a separate building.
Some of them are sourcing it out, but that's not expensive. But you know, when you're working on fixed income, things can be expensive.
But is there any thought about being able to maybe put like a wash, dry, stackable in each, like coin operated in somewhere in the hallway? And each? No, I mean in each of the buildings.
Each of the buildings?
Yeah. Or every two.
I believe, and Rick would know more about that because she spoke to the gentleman at the company. And I don't think it's going to be that expensive to put. You could use a debit card type thing, something around, I think $400 or something. And I spoke to the gentleman a couple of years ago when he first came and he said, it is a couple of different options. I guess the one they have at the office was quite a bit more than that. I don't know. But we're trying to get a meeting with them to find out just what it would cost, what type of machine they would offer and whether the seniors could have the presence of mind to be able to work it. That's all I really know about that issue.
Thank you. Linda, I just wanted to thank you for, is my mic on?
It's very quiet.
I know, it kind of is.
We probably need to turn off that.
I just, I don't, I don't really have any questions for you, Linda. I just wanted to say thank you for coming out here. You clearly have a history of getting a lot of things done and every, I've been out to the Benjamin Church Manor before for some events and I've, I've seen you there. I've seen Rick there. I've seen you out there asking questions and, and things like that. And I remember talking to you about some of your ideas about what you had for that area. And it sounds like you really do have, as Consuments Winnie said, some of the sauce to get some of those things done.
Any other questions to the council?
Just saying thank you.
Linda, any questions for the council?
No, but well, I guess yes. I know times when Benjamin Church, the lower part was built, but the wall itself, who would I talk to to find out what could be done with the wall because of it being in a historic area?
So I would say your birth, your first best next step is to reach out to community development. That's Diane Williamson and Ed Tanner in particular would be your best next step. They can guide you to whether it's historic, sort of district commission, something along those lines. But I think that they'll be able to answer your questions and what best next steps you should take.
Okay, thank you.
And that's another reason why I'm going to be voting for you because I love this, let's go, let's go.
Deers, we like, we like people.
So anything else for the council?
It doesn't enter my mind right now, but I suppose I could write you a letter.
That is, yes, we're available.
Call anybody else. Yeah, we happy to.
Yeah, absolutely.
We love to, we love to brainstorm with people.
Our numbers are public, so you can reach any one of us.
So our past practice has been to interview and then appoint at the next council meeting. Is the council okay with that or would you like to take a different course of action?
Well, can we?
I'm fine with voting now.
We can do it tonight if this council wants to because it was advertised supporting this.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yes. So is there a motion?
Can I make a motion? You do it now, you mean?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Make a motion that we approve, appoint Linda to the board of the tenant affairs, Brazil Benjamin Church Housing.
Second.
So there's a motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to appoint Linda to the unexpired term ending January 2022. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Look at that, you hit a thousand on that one. Outstanding.
Congratulations and best wishes.
You know the answer without waiting for a phone call tomorrow or watching, or watching us all tonight later.
But feel free to reach out to any of us or anyone here at town hall if you have any questions because your motivation is our motivation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So what we're going to do is pause our meeting for, we're going to recess for, we're going to take a recess for 10 minutes and we will start again at seven. Thanks. Yes, excellent. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Bristol Town Council Meeting of August 18th. We had interviews, we started the meeting a bit early at 6:30. We had an interview for an open position for the Board of Tenant Affairs, at which we did that interview for. But I think just because we always do it, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We did actually do that at 6:30, but I don't know if we can do it enough. So Madam Clerk?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
If I may, before we approve, could I ask for a motion to pull GG6? GG6, it's good news about OPEP. Hit it at the end of the meeting?
Of course.
Good news, right? Could I have a motion to that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And if we can hear that motion for the consent agenda now?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So this was put in, put on by this council because the executive order expires actually tomorrow. The executive order allowed for this to continue. This is working with our restaurants, our local businesses to assist them in the difficult time that they were going through. And I hate to say that we're out of it because we're not out of it, but we're certainly in a much better place than we were then. So this is to continue with that outdoor dining. And I think the best is State Street in particular is a great focus point that's there. So what is, I believe is the discussion point on this one was, and we mentioned this when we first put this on, was the actual time that this should expire. So, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. I was just going to mention, we were just trying to decide on the date, I think.
So what was proposed and, and the working part of this ordinance was to have it expire through January 2022. So I would like to open it up, discussion for the council on that particular time, unless there's something else we wanted to discuss. I personally would like us to see a bit earlier than that. I heard the arguments before and I agree with them that we should be as accommodating and allow for as much of the season to be used as possible. But I'd like to also balance that with what was brought up to our attention, which is snow removal, such and so forth. So maybe, and I'm open to dialogue from my colleagues, maybe through, say, for example, November 15th, that's way past, I think maybe outdoor dining would be used without any coverage or anything else. But certainly I'm open to my colleagues' thoughts.
I had brought that up, this up, excuse me, last meeting, just because especially, you don't really know. I mean, I think every week it gets a little bit more unstable as to what's happening. And it all depends on the weather, obviously. But you know, last year, the restaurants sort of, there were people sitting outside with fire pits and so forth through the winter. I'm not suggesting it all the way through the winter. I'm suggesting it at least getting through the holidays like January, like New Year's Day weekend or whatever the weekend is right after that, you know? So I'd have to look at the calendar, see what day January 1st is. But as, that was my thought was just in case, you know, if the weather is, obviously if it's snowy and miserable in a terrible winter, then we're going to have to do something different. But if it's decent and you can sit outside and, you know, any kind of restrictions going, we're all set up, we're ready to go. And they can still have things if it's like decent weather. That, that was my thought was just to get through the holidays, if people want to get together and it's decent out. I mean, it can be very windy on State Street, as you know, like for people who go to the Snowflake Raffle. But that was my thought as to why I was, I wasn't proposing all the way through January just to get through that holiday timeframe.
To kind of through the first day of the next year.
Well, if, if that's like on a Tuesday, like on a Thursday, I have to look it up real quick. If that was a Thursday, I'd say maybe that weekend, so I might do something, you know, like, what day is January 1st? You know, right there, January 1st is, oh, it's a Saturday. Well, look at that, see?
Perfect. Okay.
So January 3rd, maybe, you know, like that would be the Monday. So they have the Sunday and the month, and they have the Saturday and the Sunday.
So you're saying that, okay, all right. So I hear that.
Yeah.
Is there other thoughts?
I just wanted to ask the town administrator for his recommendation. I just know, I understand where my councilwoman, Perella, is talking about as far as going to January. I just wanted to know from the logistics of snow removal and everything else, is this going to cause a lot of problems if we go too late?
Yeah, could, getting the sidewalks in that area cleaned, access to the sidewalks. The other thing we need to consider is shopping around that time, downtown businesses for shopping. We do need every parking space that we have. And if we have indoor dining as we do now, when we started this, this exception, we had very limited indoor dining. So at this point, the restaurants are back open. If the weather is going to turn, there are no tents down there anymore. I would, I concur with the, the chairman more like November. I think those parking spaces are going to be important for the non-restaurant businesses. In some of the restaurants where you have a lunchtime crowd and you want to come in, go, go up and grab a sandwich, there's not much outside dining in inclement weather. I, I, I would prefer to see November. And it would make, to answer your question, it would make it easier for DPW to keep the area safe for pedestrians if there is snow.
Are you saying that they wouldn't be able to put tents back up if they wanted to?
We, we asked that the tents be taken down. We actually got a considerable number of complaints of the way it appeared over the spring and summer, going into the summer. So we asked that the tents be taken down.
But for the fall, you wouldn't let them put it back up, is it?
I think it's in the wintertime, again, the restaurants are open, there is indoor dining. I'm not recommending the tents again, no.
So they weren't, if somebody asked you, the answer would be no?
As of right now, the answer is no, yeah.
I'd agree with that.
Anyone else?
I, I remember quite a bit of discussion we had around this topic. However, I, I hear both sides, but I can see this become sort of a hiccup. Having sat on the administrative seat previously, I, you know, it becomes the logistics, you know? And it becomes difficult. And I'm not so sure now that we are, I mean, hopefully we'll continue to good path, that we don't return to anything as previously. I, you know, in having full capacity in the restaurants right now, I, I think we, we can do without it. So I would support that, that we go with it earlier than later.
Okay.
It is known that there are people who are not comfortable sitting in restaurants, you know, but.
So I think that it's fair to say, whatever we end up with a closed date, if the, and I don't believe it's going to do this, but if the world goes sideways as it did, then this council stands ready to adjust things as quickly as necessary. I know the administrator does too. So I would say that for myself, obviously it was clear on where I was coming from, but I think we all are in the same place that whatever is required, if the, if the world changes very quickly and continuing this is in the best interest of the town and those businesses, I would happily support such.
Well said, Mr. Chairman. I think an ordinance can always be changed. And so I would make a motion to approve the second reading for adoption with a, and where we'd end it on November 30th, which is a Tuesday.
November 30th, okay. Is there a second?
All second.
There's a motion and a second discussion?
Yeah, I'll just, I'm just kind of thinking through this a little bit. And if we were to amend the ordinance later on, when would we have to maybe start thinking about doing that so that we can get through the first and second reading? So it'd probably be early October.
So it's a great question. So six weeks is typically, right? Three weeks, first reading, second reading. But I would say this is that I am not exactly where I was going, Mary, thank you. I'm not tempting fate, but if executive order was necessary, then, then we would look to the administrator to, to take such action. Quite honestly, I don't think we would have to, I don't think we'd take any prompting from us. I think he would do it all by himself. I am hoping that we are all so far wrong from all of this and that we continue down the path. I, I think things are going, I think these things are going to continue to get a little bit worse, but I don't think we're going to get back to where we were for so many reasons that we won't stay right now. So, but I think it's fair to say one more time, this council and this town would, would adjust itself quickly and efficiently to make opportunities available when necessary. Okay? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second with this ordinance to pass with an expiration date of November 30th. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to approve the adoption of the ordinance to remove one class BV license, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve the first reading for adoption?
Second.
Motion and a second signifying first reading made by Tim, seconded by Tony. I just add, we don't have any discussion for first reading, but I know the applicant or the petitioner is here from our last meeting. And I know for all of us, we want to make sure that, and it seemed like they were very amenable. So I'd like to speak on their behalf, but they were very amenable to the request that this is a restaurant-forward establishment like we have with our other establishments. with our other establishments here in Bristol. Other than that, we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve first reading for adoption.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony for first reading adoption. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion. We set the date for September eighth. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to call for public hearing on September eighth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We'll be home at eight.
Don't jinx us. Don't jinx us. Motion to call for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to call for public hearing. I'd like to take a moment and have the solicitor just explain a few things, call for public hearing, be at our next meeting, correct?
Actually, this is gonna be September twenty ninth.
Thank you.
Because we need to hear from the planning board and they'll be meeting after your September eighth meeting. And then we need time to advertise. So, yes, although this is coming legally under state law, you have to place this under the abandoned statute. However, we're not abandoning the road. In fact, what we're doing, what's being proposed to you is that a tiny little portion of the right of way of the road be granted an easement to the property owner where his steps come down from his property actually land on town property, which is the road. In order to grant a permanent easement, which of course means the town will continue to own the road always, subject to this easement, the state law requires that we go through this official abandonment process. The actual area that the easement is being sought for is going to be a meet and bounds description, very specific. Literally this small area where the steps hit the road. And in that way, as we'll explain again at the public hearing, there will be no way for this property owner or, for instance, any future property owner to try to gain more property. That's the whole reason why we don't just have a map, but we have a specific meets and bounds, which means the area is described in feet and inches. So that's what you're hearing will be about. It's about an easement. It's not about a be ended of the road, and it's because state law requires.
And Mike, if we were to decide to approve this, assuming we get a positive recommendation from the planning board, then we can put specific restrictions as, as is, and it can't be anymore, which kind of speaks to your earlier point, correct?
We'll certainly walk you through that. No problem.
Perfect. All right. So we had a motion and a second and some clarity from the solicitor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Yeah, let's go. Yeah, let's start with Stephen Roth, if we could counsel.
I'll make a motion to accept Stephen Roth's resignation with a letter of thanks and to also go out for advertisement in this position.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony for a letter of thanks and to go out for, well, to advertise. Any discussion?
Could we just ask the Tor Pat Peterson if he would want to move up? Isn't that normally what we would do in the alternate position?
It is. I'm, I wasn't quite sure if this council sitting had interviewed all interested applicants, sorry, I had a brain fade there. I do not recall, I apologize. Do you, do you know, Madam Clerk, if this council has interviewed both or the interested candidates?
I guess my only point is that it could be any way that we wanted to, but we could interview them, but it's likely to be the, yeah, likely to be the second alternate position that we would be appointing.
I agree with that. That is our past practice. I, I'm okay with the interviews when, but I do agree that we certainly have bias towards. Positive bias, so. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to go to interviews. Is there, is there discussion about that? Would like to go a different path? I do agree with what Mary said, so. So that's the motion currently. So Tim, is that the motion that you'd like to continue with? I'm okay with that.
To continue with an interview.
Yes.
Right, yes.
Okay. All right. So we had a motion and a second. So is, that's, that is the motion on the floor. So I will call for a vote on that. It doesn't mean that, that certainly that we can't ultimately appoint Owen or I suppose Michael because he's interested or appointed. Is there a question? You look like you have a question.
No, I'm just a little, a little confused because I thought we were just gonna elevate from the harbor advisory, you know, from the advisory committee, you know, to fail. I mean, obviously, we're gonna, we intend to elevate. Am I correct, Peterson?
I think the.
To first alternate.
I'm not gonna speak for Tim, but I do believe that it was just to.
Just to go out.
To go out and say, and then with, with certain bias, greater bias for sitting members.
We could just, you could just say you're gonna advertise for, I mean, not advertise, or interviews for the alternate positions. Because then you can determine who's first and second alternate anyway, because you're still gonna need an alternate position.
Tim, I defer to you, sir.
That's fine, because in past practice, you're right, we have just elevated in the past, and then we, why don't we just advertise for the alternate position as well? I just was trying to be transparent with the interviews and just make sure we're all being fair, so, but I'm also open to that.
Can I ask for a new motion?
Yeah, so we're gonna go ahead and elevate Owen Rock chief, who is currently serving as the advisory committee, and we're gonna elevate him to what are we elevating him to? Second alternate?
That is Tim's motion. Is there a second?
No, 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 that's not right. You're not elevating. Did you say Owen? What did you say? Owen O'Rourke?
I love Clary. Go ahead.
I thought we were.
This is what I think we should do.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah.
I think we should do. I think we should elevate Tor Peterson on the Harbor Commission from second to first.
First alternate.
On the Harbor Commission. Then we can advertise for the second alternate position, which would include Owen O'Rourke and
Michael.
And the, yeah, Michael, and anybody else that may come in because, and then we would have to do an advertisement. We go on to two, G two, because Edward Quinn does not one, is not able to be reappointed. So we're still gonna have an opening on the Harbor Advisory Committee as well. That, that's what I would think.
Mary, I would say.
Asking for, I wasn't asking to move somebody from the advisory committee over to the commission.
Mary, I'll take that as a motion because that, that's exactly right. I was getting my alternates mixed up and it's, we're moving alternate from the second up to the first, and then we're advertising for the second. So that's true.
So here's what we'll do. So all of that sounds right and good. So let's do step one, which is, why don't we have a motion, your initial motion, Tim?
Yeah.
Maybe you can restate it that we'll take Stephen Roth's resignation, letter of thanks, and we'll stop there and then we'll take the next step. Go ahead.
Yeah, make a motion for that we accept Stephen Roth's letter of resignation with a letter of thanks and.
And we'll stop there at a moment. All right, so seconded by Mary, made by Tim, seconded by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. All right. So now we are on G one B, right? And G one, I'm sorry, we're on G two now, right?
No, we're on G.
All right, we're on G one B. Go ahead. So Mary, you make that motion because you did a great job with that.
No, I was going to move that we elevate Tor Peterson
Yeah.
From second alternate to the first.
To first.
On the Harvard Commission.
So let's stop right there and make that motion.
Second, I'll second.
All right, so made by Mary, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
And then we advertise, advertise, set up interviews. We already sort of advertised, set up interviews and continue to take, you know, people if they're interested for the second alternate position of the Harbor Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to ask one question based on what Clerk Cordeiro was saying, was that usually what we do is we'll take somebody from the advisory board, right, and put them into that position, that second alternate. So then do we have to interview for that if that person has expressed interest in that second?
It's like last time, remember, a few months ago, we had two or three people who were in the advisory committee all wanting to go on to like one position on the commission. So I think we could, I think it would hurt to interview them for this particular position, but they could, you could, you know, wait it so that like, well, they've already been on that and they're ready to be elevated up.
Okay.
You know, that's what I would think.
Because I just noticed that Michael was interested in both positions.
And it's gonna be potentially two advisory commission.
Okay.
Potentially, depending on what happens.
So could you restate that motion? We'll get a second on it and we'll take a vote.
Will me?
Yes.
So that we would advertise for the second alternate position for the Harbor Commission. That would be that, that part of that one. And, and ask the clerk to set up interviews. On, you know, whatever the cutoff, I know we've already advertised for it anyway, so, you know, continue to do that. So maybe at the next meeting, we have the interviews, perhaps. Is that what you're thinking?
That's, that sounds perfect to me. May I also ask that you add to that motion that we accept the letter of resignation from Edward Quinn and with a letter of thanks.
Now, that's already a separate, that's, that's a different.
I'm dying over here.
No, we have another one to do.
Interviews might all be the same night.
That's what I heard too. Is there a discussion? Everybody know what they're voting on?
Yeah.
Excellent. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion. Right. So I would make a motion, just like Tim did, or unless he wants to do it, to send a letter of thanks to Edward, Ed Quinn. And then to advertise for the Harbor Advisory Committee positions.
Second.
Instead of interviewing.
Instead of interviewing.
I would imagine they'd be probably the same night anyway, because it's gonna be some of the same people.
Yes, and I would ask this council if we could plan on our next meeting, six thirty, depending on how many applicants may be earlier. Okay?
Sounds good.
Cool. All right. So we had a motion made by Mary, seconded by Tim. You've heard all of it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is the easy part of it.
And this is a to fill up terms by August twenty fourth, Anthony Rego Junior with interest.
And no one is resigning, so that's good news.
Motion to reappoint Anthony Rego.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to reappoint Anthony Rego. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Could you, what is the motion on this? I always forget on Christmas Festival, we are accepting their recommendation. I forgot, is it an actual appointment? So appoint that, huh? Okay, so go ahead, sir.
Okay, well, I guess. Normally, we've, we've been making, I mean, I know you read it that way, but in the past, we've just made a motion to
Accept as stated.
Recommendation of the, of the chair.
Yeah, Tony, we usually make a motion just to accept as stated.
I think that's better that way.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was motion made by Tony. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Before we go to old business, I'm gonna take a moment to say thank you for bearing with us to get through all of that. My goodness, normally it isn't that painful, but on a serious note, thank you. Thank you for the efforts and energies given back to this town by all of our boards and commissions. This council and this town very much appreciates it.
Absolutely.
The original, it was in front of this council at our last meeting with a recommendation from the police department because there was no time on the original petition for ten PM. Past practice has said eleven PM, that's what the applicant is actually asking for. And is, there should be clarity inside here, is there, on our? We have a eleven PM stop time, correct? Excellent. That is what's in front of us.
So motion approved the one day dancing and entertainment license for the Santa Cristo feast on August twenty seventh to start at five PM and to end at eleven PM. Saturday, August twenty eighth from five PM to eleven PM, and Sunday, August twenty ninth from five PM to eleven PM.
Ten o'clock, right? Sunday is ten on that.
Ten o'clock. Oops, I was giving an extra hour of party. Sorry, guys.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony for eleven, eleven and ten, right, for those three days?
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So this agenda item was put on by my request, give you a little bit of history on it and I know Brenda is here along with Jonathan, right? Excellent. Nice to see you both. I had asked for this to be put on the council agenda because during COVID in particular, I had a lot of residents reach out and ask why they did not have, or why was access limited to Mount Hope Farm. So after some discussion, is, if you've driven by the farm, there is a a gate or a newer gate, I should say, on the southerly entrance, I guess the best way to explain that. And that's kind of what initially prompted the, the, kind of the, the comments from residents, but it continued. So I reached out to Diane Williamson to ask for some, if she would do some clarity work on this. And her intern, is that correct? Emerson? We have what is an outstanding white paper. My goodness, the effort and the work that went into that. It's, it's a lot of information and it was well presented, so, so. well presented. So, so outstanding job. Yeah. So the reason why this is in front of the council tonight was to start to, to get clarity, not only for the council, but more importantly for the public of how did we get here? Meaning, Mount Hope Farm, what, does it belong to the town? The answer is no. It doesn't belong to the town. And in fact, that's part of the supporting documentation here. And what are, what are the rights of the public? Is there any rights to the public? What are the rights of Mount Hope Farm? For example, you know, accessing on a private event, for example. So what I mean by that is if, if Mount Hope Farm is having an event, a wedding, right? Then those areas would be of course closed off to the public. But this prompted, this initial prompting of, of accessing brought into clarity a lot of other issues that, that came up. And what I mean by that, and Diane, I'm going to ask if you would, and I know that Brenda and Jonathan are also going to help with clarity on this. The goal here this evening, if I may, is not to take action. I'd like to continue this to our next meeting, but I want to have a little bit of dialogue this evening. This is a lot for all of us to digest. There's a lot of information on bylaws. There's a lot of information on history of Mount Hope Farm and how we got there. Mary, I know that you were on the council when this happened. And, and remind me to make that point about the, that maybe we review the discussion that happened back then so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I'm going to go back to Diane. If you could just take a moment and maybe share the highest level overview of what is the, what are the rights of the public, if you will? How did we, how did, how did Mount Home Farm become what it is then? And maybe Brenda and Jonathan could talk about what it is today. But if you could kind of remind the public of what are, you know, what do we have there, which is an outstanding and beautiful property?
Thank you. And it just, there's a lot of paperwork. We gave you a lot of information in your packets. There is one sheet which is titled Mount Hope Trust History and Bylaws, and that's probably the best sort of outline of the history. And I, I think that this is a good sort of a refresh. There's new faces, you know, new folks involved and even people on the board, the Mount Hope Farm Board don't necessarily maybe know in history. So thank you for this. Just broadly, the property was identified in the comprehensive plan as a really significant historic property that the town always desired to be, to have preserved. And when the Haverford family, when, when the estate was, you know, selling the property, the the town thought it was very important to try to preserve it. And there was a, a bond referendum on the ballot for voters to see if we could raise the funds to buy the farm that was part of the funding. And it was matched with a DEM grant, an anonymous donor, and Saint Michael's Church gave money to help preserve it, to, to acquire the property. When we were advocating for passage of the bond, there was a lot of concern among the residents that if the town were to actually buy it and own it, it could be a huge liability for us in terms of maintenance, you know, caretaking. It had a lot of historic buildings. It was a huge property. And so there was a conscious decision made to set up a trust, which exists today, the Mount Hope Farm Trust in Bristol. And the council set that up as a prerequisite to the eventual preservation of the property. And the town advertised for members to be on the trust and it was deeded to the trust and they are the organization that oversees the property. During that time, the town council also worked with the solicitor's office to establish a set of bylaws. And the bylaws would set forth how things would be running, hours of operation, management of the farm, how the trustees would be appointed and so on and so forth. And there's many sections in the bylaws, but the two that were really important to the town were the operation and maintenance of the farm and, and the trustees, because there were, there was hope that you would have, you know, an appointment to the trust. In 2010, there were revisions to the bylaws. There was a little change in the trust, the members, the trust members used to include originally elected officials. And in 2010, when we revisited that, it was felt that that wasn't really a good way to position the trust with elected officials. They should really be more independent people from the town. So the bylaws were amended and they, they changed sort of the formatting of, of the trust. However, you still do have one appointment to the trust. So when the bylaws were adopted, there were two sections that the town still wanted to review, that the power was given to the Mount Hope Trust to amend their bylaws, subject to two, two sections that you would have to ratify along with them if they amended them, Articles Three and Four. And that's what's in front of you from the trust tonight. And, and those are what set forth, your question was what rights do the public have? When can it, when can the farm be accessed? So the original bylaws that the council adopted in 1999 and then subsequently amended in 2010 included things like the farm shall be open from sunrise to sunset. As you mentioned, when there are weddings, people need to respect that. You can't walk through the wedding. And, and the weddings and the events were uses that we supported because the goal was to make the farm sustainable as its own entity and not come to the town for budgetary requests every year. So it was a way to allow them to be sustainable, create uses that sort of lay lightly on the land and don't impact the historic integrity of it and the aesthetic integrity of it. And so, so that's been, you know, that's a little update and it's been like 20, it was 20 years, right?
More than that.
More than that. Yeah.
Yeah.
22 years. So it was interesting because in 2010, there was that, you know, the shift in the, in the makeup and, and there was a lot of discussion with the council. Now here it is 10, 11 years later and coming back to you. So it is good to kind of refresh on it every once in a while.
So, thank you for that. So specifically, we're, we're going to, we're just going to call this what this is at this point, is there were changes made to the bylaws. Those bylaw changes removed, actually, one of the items said that it didn't have to come in front of the council anymore. That is of course unacceptable. The reason why the farm was able to be purchased was because the public authorized one point, I'm going to ballpark and say 1.5 million dollars, plus it was under, it was the public's will that got a DEM grant for another 400,000. So if you'll allow me a little bit of rounding off, $2 million of public funds were used. And Diane, you rightly expressed that the town wasn't looking to own it, is not looking to own it, can't own it. The focus on what the farm has done, obviously excluding the concerns that we're expressing right now, have been outstanding. I, I know so many people, including myself, that go to events, walking down there, that it is an absolutely beautiful property. And that decision made by the council of years ago, authorized by the people of Bristol, was absolutely the right decision. So I'm very happy that that happened. Why we're talking tonight is I, none of us had any idea that any of these changes had been made. I didn't, my goal in putting this in front of all of us was to tell the public what it is and what it's not. We talked about it doesn't, the town doesn't own it, but the town has rights to public access. And to be clear, Mount Hope Farm is not saying you don't. There's, there's no, you know, fist in the air saying we disagree. Where I think we've lost our way on some of this is clear times. And I think that's part of the conversation that we can have. It says sunrise to sunset. That's got a nice flow about it, but I don't know how we enforce it. I was thinking that we can have more specific summer hours and winter hours. Clear signage there, appropriately placed. And I know that Brenda and Jonathan are going to speak to this, but clear signage of when it's okay to be there, when it's not, and clear signage when there's events going on and where you should avoid, right? What this council needs to do is a couple of things. One is listen to Brenda and Jonathan. Two is consider all the things that are in front of us. Three, walk this, we're going to, I think we should refer this to the solicitor to look through the bylaw changes and make sure that the changes and, and we're going to hear from, I keep saying Brenda and Jonathan. They've made some changes and revised it back to what it once was. And I'm going to ask them to come up and speak to that. So what we can do is talk about what needs to be changed still with the bylaws, if anything. And also you brought up about our appointment. We've never asked our appointed member for reporting, whether it's yearly or bi-yearly or whatever this council thinks appropriate, sharing information about that. I think that's also part of it. I also think, and this was a recommendation from the board of changing our appointment potentially to follow as the other board members do. So I have a two-year term with a one-year hiatus and that would offer new people to potentially consider it. So, but if you could both come up and maybe kind of share a little bit more and fill in the holes that I've missed. Again, the goal is to bring us up to speed at the moment and then have this council consider this and then maybe take some steps at our next meeting or the following year. But welcome to both of you. State your names and addresses for the record as you speak.
Okay. Brenda Cherteta, 250 Metacom Avenue, here in Bristol.
Jonathan Feinstein, 225 Field Street.
Welcome both of you.
Thanks. So yeah, so Diane, great job as well by Emerson. I think she did a great job capturing everything. And I'm new to the farm and the executive director role. So it's been enlightening to learn about a lot of these items with the bylaws. And prior to my being the director, there obviously were some changes, as you mentioned, which, which need to, needed to be addressed. So a couple of things have happened. And in regards to the hours, we have, we had put in place, and it's on our website, that we are open 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM daily. And that was because sunrise to sunset, I mean, if you get out your phone, there is a definitive sunrise and a definitive sunset. We run into a lot of gray areas at the farm. So we really want to be able to set a time. And you're right, we probably should go back and consider whether we want to change that for the winter. But we felt eight to six was allowed people who get home from work at five, even if it's dark, you want to go for a quick walk to end your day. You know, we don't want to hold that back. We don't allow it. At this point, we have not said that it's open after six because we did run into a lot of problems over the past year with vandalism and things going on at the farm, which resulted in us closing that south gate. And we just had not, we do not have the funds to continually correct the errors of some people's judgment and clean up the, the fields and, and other things that happened. So.
We had vandalism in the last two years. So, you know, our staff, Arnold starts at 7:30?
Seven.
Seven to 3:30?
Mm-hmm.
So myself and others drive the property after hours between that and six. So we needed, as Brenda said, set some definitive times.
Right.
Because we've had, let me see, about $40,000 worth of damage to stone pillars and walls, people crashing to them, then they leave. And it, it's really security and we can't do it. We have some cameras, but they're ineffective. It's a bigger property. So the hour, of course, the definition is mainly because of security. If the town would like us to be more than that, and if they have, you have some security availability to assist us, we could extend it. We just don't have the bandwidth to go sunrise to sunset.
And, and just for clarification, the hours that it's open from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, is that, I know there's two entrances. There's one that goes into the main three.
That's the one.
That's the one.
We're trying to control the access there for security. We had too many people coming in the, the south access where that gate is. We couldn't control it. This is when we had dogs and we had a mess. We had so much problems with it by controlling access and parking the lot right below the barn. And at least then, because Arnold's there and our people are there, we know what's going on.
A little more visibility where if you go in that other gate, we can't see anything. Yeah. And we, we are working to create actual signs. There are signs with a local printing company right now that I was waiting for that identify the hours. And we're going to put those in various locations. So it's very clear where, you know, what the hours are because it, not everybody accesses the internet to look at our Facebook or, our website. So we, we recognize that and we're, we're correcting that. The next, let me just see if there was anything else I wanted to mention. So the next piece was in regards to Article Four, the, the town council appointed representative. So, you know, I think everything that you mentioned, chairman, was, was on point with, with what needs to happen. And, and we would recommend that there would be some guidelines created for that role where they really understood the reason that they sit on the, on that, on that board. It's not just as a friendly face. It, it needs to report back to you all and to report to us. I think I speak for myself and the board when I say we really want to work with the town. We've been trying to do that over the past year or so better than we had in the past. And so I think having that person be very instrumental and have some concrete directives would be, would be helpful. And then the last item that, that we reviewed was there's another article at the end of the, our bylaws, Article 11, which addresses when we make amendment to the bylaws and the process of bringing them before the council here as it relates to any changes to Articles Three and Four. And we'd like to expand that, which it's not represented right now, but we will be expanding that to your point about continuing on with this, with this review, that we would then be required to bring before you changes to Articles Three, Four and 11. So if we were going to make amendments to bylaws, if we were going to try to change anything as to the vote of, you know, your say on Articles Three and Four, we'd have to bring that to you for you to agree with. So that just covers everybody, I think.
And you know, going back to the hour issue, you know, when COVID hit so weekly, and I know I spoke to Mr. Contetti early on during COVID, Haverford, London Place, Blithold, myself, all the executive directors, we didn't have an executive director at that time. The three or four of us were just running the farm. We spoke every week. At that time, because of COVID, we closed the farm for public access as all the other nonprofits did. That was COVID related. It had nothing to do with anything else. Because we could not allow the public, just like Blithold and London Place did. And then we worked our way up to try to get more and more access as COVID related. So, you know, now we're the eight to six. So, you know, we have no plans of making any changes unless there's an, an issue as with others because of COVID related.
One of the, one of the feedback points that I've gotten from multiple residents was, I used to be able to bring my dog there. Now I can't.
Yeah.
So could you speak to that? I know that we've talked about it and, and maybe just call it what it is and what potential solutions are with that? So I've got two dogs. I understand what it means to bring a nasty looking pooper scooper with me. So I don't leave nasty things on the ground, right? So, but maybe you could speak to that.
It's a huge issue and I get confronted with it. I'm a dog person as well. And Diane and I had a long talk about this about a year ago when things were really getting significant. And the discussion was, was focused on, and I think that incredibly wrong, your comments to me was the original intent of the farm was not to include dogs. It was really focused on public access and using the, the beauty of the farm for walking and passive recreation. We were not able to maintain, number one, people would keep their dogs on the leash. People to, you know, we have poop bags in the trees. We have all kinds of garbage. Now, so that's why we stopped. We couldn't do it. And we had the discussion with Diane and we said, okay, we're going to stop it. We took a lot of flak, a lot of heat because of that. Now, we have people making proposals to us now to reinstate dogs. So I said, boy, that's a great idea. And there's a lot of ordinances and bylaws, but the, the key issue is, and what I've told people is, great. You want to have a dog's back in my own farm? Show me the volunteer team that's going to be responsible for it in a plan that we could put forward to the board. And so far, that's never happened. So people want it, but we, we don't have the manpower to, to implement it. If there was the manpower to implement it as a program, we would take it to the board and I think could be feasible because I would love to walk my dog there. I mean, that's the answer. It's not a popular answer. I don't know what else to do.
Other than designating sort of, some sort of park zone and within almost like a dog park within Mount Hope Farm where you're, you, when you do bring your dog, you're kind of just kind of allowed in certain, a certain area. I mean, other than that, I can't, I can't think of anything, Jonathan.
We looked at that and, you know, vets don't think it's a good idea because of, you know, the pickup disease from one dog to the other, you know.
Okay.
Well, certainly it wasn't the only point, but I just wanted to get that out because I had a multitude of people asking me about it. So Ed, colleagues, is there anything else besides what's already been asked thus far? Again, our goal here this evening was a first blush of talking about this, putting it out there. And then what are we going to do for next steps? Anyone else before we? No? Okay. What I would ask is that all of this hard work be posted on your website, Mount Hope Farm, and also the town's website. The history is outstanding, showing what, and I'm talking about recent history and then also the history of the farm and how it changed ownership. And I thought it was, again, And I thought it was, again, Emerson did an outstanding job. So I'd like to, if unless the council thinks otherwise, I'd like to continue this to our next meeting, refer to the solicitor to review the changes in the bylaws. And also that this council consider each one of us what we would like to see from our appointee that position. In fact, Madam Clerk, maybe as part of that motion, we could ask our appointee to be at the next meeting, a look to be part of this conversation. So.
You know, one other thing, you know, the thing that we've been working hard with Diane and her staff. We have a meeting, a work session next week is on the revisions to our master plan. And that's really the blueprint for the future of the farm. And Meredith has been involved with this. We've been working for over a year to update it. An old plan, which had everything from windmills to a dog cemetery, which we took out. They had condos up in the field potentially. So we took all that out. We tried to make it much more, you know, related to what's there now and for stewardship in in the future of the farm. Because we have things like, you know, we're an arboretum now. We're doing a grove for for trees where people can dedicate. I mean, we're doing things that are really consistent with that being not, you know, putting condos condos and windmills on the farm. And once that gets hopefully approved, Charlotte, that's going to be the blueprint for the future, which we're going to follow in concert with the town. That's that's the hope.
Anything else from this council?
I I was there, I was here, I should say, when the elected official, I believe it was the clerk and the administrator turned on that board. And there was a lot of issues that arose. And so why would we change it? And I didn't need to go back through the history, you know, I remember most of it, but just three guys, like, you know, remember that. I guess I would be curious in the next time we discuss this, what you see. So the role that the chairman has brought up as far as having an appointment that the council now has as a board member, that a full board member is out of that possible board member. Is there a need for that? Or is it something that is written in the bylaws that, you know, you submit the plan, you submit a report to us every so often, you know, yearly or every other year on those particular articles? You know, so I guess I'm looking to see if is that at this point in time is still the best way to go? So we've done it for 10 years or almost 11 years, when it changed. So it was 10, 11 years when we had the elected officials on it. And and it was, you know, and then this way here, is that a good way? Do we streamline that? Does that person have a specific role? Or does it become, even though we have this role because we have, you know, gotten the bond and so forth? I mean, the history is is different, but it's not substantially different, I don't think. Maybe correctly, Diane, yes, from London Place. In that, you know, why London Place got started because the town wanted to want to see that condo and so forth like that. And, you know, we do have liaisons, you know, you can call any of us up anytime. And we are here to help any of the boards, any of the nonprofits and businesses in town. And certainly with Explore Bristol, you know, the wedding venues and the stuff that we have going on in relation to that kind of that work. It's really made a big difference. So tourism is a major industry for us here. The weddings and, I mean, that is something that, you know, we would want to help if, you know, something is going to close. I mean, we've done this many times, but we've had to swoop in and give loans or do whatever. So I guess I would be curious from your point of view. Is it still like the best model to have us have a, you know, you answered today. I just am curious about this. To have like a board member that represents us? Or is that better served by you having another board member? Or is that person, you know, just that hot that there's somebody that goes to those meetings that knows? Or is it just, you know, that like all the other nonprofits in town are similar? That we have liaison to those groups of people? So you've got one council person, you can call any of us, but if there's one person you might want to call, there's a real issue in your time. So that's when, you know, that's what I was thinking about in relation to that. I just raise those as questions.
That's a good point.
You know, as a first step, I submitted what I called expectations, a draft. Okay, what's the expectation of that person from my point of view? And what may be your expectations? And the first step would be really helpful. Because in order to have collaboration and better lines of communication, it's a two-way flow. Both, as Brenda mentioned, that person should be reporting back to you guys on a regular basis as well as your priorities back through them to us. You know, whether it's quarterly or whatever. And I think that as a first step would really, it would help us.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I think it's it's an interesting thought on both sides. Because, you know, I know that we had the bond, I know that we got all this, you know, investment. But I also know that we had rental properties in needing to say, for that. I would say, and I know it's been presented to us as, well, you have to bail us out on this because you guys sort of own it. You know, in years past. But I would feel the same way if it was London Place coming or Life Wall or somebody else that was coming to us. Because in some of those cases, we've had to do the same thing for some of them. And others, they're very important, you know, aspects, cultural aspects, environmental aspects to our community. So I'm not, so sometimes it's like a little tricky too, like, you know, should we be quote favoring this one nonprofit, you know, trust over the others? Because they all kind of doing the same thing, and all working synergistically to bring people to this town. So, I mean, that's just like, I'm just thinking about it in those terms.
You know, from the big picture point of view, just one last thing, you know, we've made great strides with the Poconocats. We just had this major, you know, marker, selling marker down there. But the big picture item in the next, say, five years, you know, we manage the Brown property for Brown. Okay, and that's almost 300 acres. The future of that property is critical. And we've had some initial dialogues with Brown. And then as well as with the Poconocats as part of, because of their, you know, history of the property. If there was going to be one thing to work really closely and together for the future is that property. Okay, because, you know, it was one, okay? The easement goes right down through our road. That's integral for not only Bristol, but for the Poconocats. So that's something we should think about, you know, talking together, because we are in discussions with Brown now.
I think that is a pretty funny, even before this project, this property came up. Yeah, so I had like two iterations of the council, you know, I moved the council into the legislature back of council. I mean, I would say there is like a handful of properties in Bristol. And that is certainly one of them that is the most critical historically, you know, the Wood, Brown, for a whole variety of reasons. And certainly with the, you know, the work that indigenous populations are doing, for example, in particular. And things that is really, that's probably the most important. That is a piece of property that worries us. That was a piece of property that came up, I believe, if I remember correctly, which is not that in memory anymore. But, you know, first, what's going to happen to that? What if they sold? What if Brown wants out of that? What happens to that property? What, you know, the waterfront, what do we do with all of that? What do we do with the village chair? And so that is probably the number one, one of the biggest worries over like a long period of time. Did you say that, Diane? Like, I would say like that one, some of the properties down off the Barry Road. But definitely that, you know, and then when Brown moved there, the museum and all of that to, you know, Providence. I mean, I think that was another another hit, but they weren't necessarily paying attention. And so, you know, so we sort of take the interest in the upper part of it. But I think that that's such a critical part of what they're doing. And that really would maybe, you know, come in as far as like the farm and also like what our role is in the town and in recognizing the tribe. So, I mean, I think that those are all like really, really good questions. And I think that I'm very happy you say that you're you're doing that. Because that property, nobody knows what Brown's going to do with it. So we see other properties and other universities just selling, you know, critical property. Next thing we know, you know, somebody's bought it and we're, you know, in trouble. But, um, so I'm happy to hear you say that, but I think that's a good point. You really should think about strategically, like, what is it that you're going to need from the town to go forward with that project? And what is, you know? And what is it the person that if we keep the model that we have currently, or do we do something else? Is it a separate supplement? I'm not sure how you're, you know, all of the board, all of the, that structure, but.
Well, this is a great point on on one of many things that we need to make sure is front and center. And I feel like it's not been there in the past, but conversations like this will make sure it happens now or in the future. So what needs to happen at this point is we need to continue this to our next meeting. And unless there's council disagreement, refer to the solicitor to review the bylaws. What changes, if any, are proposed by the solicitor to to make sure it it's back into where it should be in regards to public access. And also that this council, this doesn't have to be part of the motion, but I'll just say it is that that we consider what we want from that appointed position and in the sense of requirements. So can we get a motion to to continue and refer to solicitors?
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony to refer and continue seconded by Tim. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And we'll take this up at the end of the meeting, please. So we have a multiple, I don't know, it looks like 10 or so items that are budget adjustments. And Julie, I'm sure you, if you can go through these, the first one was the administrator. So I'm on one, we just start with the administrator. Julie and Mr. Administrator, if you could speak to what the adjustments are on these, if you may, if you would. Please, thank you.
Last year was the first year that we did this exercise. And basically, it's just an internal balancing of accounts after the year end. So that, and it's common with, not every community does it, but it's pretty common practice. So this first came up maybe four or five years ago. It was Tim who had talked about departments in deficit at the end of the year.
It was.
In the back of the eye. So what this does is we look at all of the departments that we see where the overdeserves are and shortages are, and we just do an internal balance. So what you have before you are the departments in total that were overspent for a majority of reasons and then the departments who ended up moving at the end of the year. And so we're transferring funds from those departments to cover the shortages. That's the exercise.
I don't think we need to do that. And certainly, my colleagues and I will ask particular questions. But maybe you could hit the high level on each one of these, so we're all clear on why they're making, why the adjustments are being made.
So we're transferring approximately $25,000 for the administrator's budget. Plus a little bit more than our normal.
Could you stop there just for a second? So, Mr. Administrator, is that that's atypical of what normally happens? Is that correct?
Yeah, we completed three from last fiscal, from two fiscal years ago. So we're in mid, we're in mid-year with those negotiations. And then this year, we finished the last two that would have started July 1st, this past July 1st. We actually settled in this past budget year, five union contracts.
It's the first time that I have seen in my years with the town contracts being negotiated and finalized prior to the first day that the contract was backed. And it was so nice for our administration purposes. It will very much appreciated that usually we're doing all kinds of, you know, capitalization for for retro pays and such. So it was really a debate, almost, to get all that done.
Outstanding to you and to all five unions for finding common ground.
It worked well, we had good mutual understanding and commitment to the town. Beautiful. But the the good news is hopefully the allotment for this year's labor line, hopefully we can will be in good shape with that issue, barring any major labor issues.
Excellent.
Thanks, Steve.
We also transferred funds for $22,500 for the town work. And that was primarily due to the high level of real estate transactions. So.
Is that hourly time? Is that what that is? Is that is that wage time? Is that what the?
That is the transactions and those related to increases in the real estate transactions. So I think it was a huge year for mortgage interest rates. So I can only find the.
So recording fees, is that kind of?
Since the revenues are up also, but our.
So we made that adjustment. I understand. Thank you.
Debt service, we've had a bond issue at the beginning of the fiscal year and a bond issue right after the end of the fiscal year. So a lot of that prepped up in the possibility, so it ended up leading to fiscal 20. So that's why. Transfers needed there, that's about $5,000. Town hall complex was the largest, $100,000. We did an awful lot of work this year renovating and maintaining our town buildings. It's been a focus for the last few years to try and get our buildings in better shape. A lot of work and progress has been made. We also have been, we recognized, and I remember during our budget preparations, this fiscal year, we went forward to fiscal 22. We did increase the lines. And actually, as I went through these, I checked the fiscal 22 to see where we were, you know, overspent last year. Did we make adjustments? Did we need to make adjustments? And we actually did. We responded to pretty much each one of these, and we adjusted to a, hopefully, a more appropriate level so that we can have money.
Would you remind everyone that what the town hall complex is? It's not just this town hall.
It's our school buildings up at the town hall, and so that would be around the. And then also the Red Side Building and 9th Street and 10th.
Thank you.
Veterans Council moved into Burnside, they ended up have accessible space, and so renovations were done there.
It's beautiful. It is, that's handy.
We also had technology increases. Part of all of these changes that we've been making with COVID and cyber security. So we had warnings there, and we had adjustments this fiscal budget. Trevor had a little bit of $7,000 for dock repairs and maintenance, and we increased their budget for docks. Also, there's a lot of work that always needs to be done there.
And I could say that was due, but like the dock that they did, I think it wasn't upwind this past weekend.
Well, Steve, you said it about one of the fishermen said that they don't have to look down to walk down the dock anymore. That's, I think that's perfect, so. Go ahead, Julie.
And then the fire truck had about $63,000. They had a roughener with their vehicle maintenance. And and the stipend for more than anticipated, but we made those adjustments for fiscal 22. So I don't anticipate these issues that were identified being in their fiscal function.
A lot of that need with all the COVID. And all the rescue calls and everything. I think last summer, people just crazy, like calling, things happening. A lot of it had to do with that.
I don't know if that if that was really the reason why. I think that it it seemed to be more around their you can see all the parts, but some of the maintenance issue, they were having a lot of the bills were for high, you know, $4,000 or $3,000 there. And it really just added up.
Steve? Yeah, I know we had quite a few breakdowns. The rescue has been busier than ever. So, thank you.
So funding sources primarily were fixed charges budget. And we better than anticipated our sharks premium. So we were able to take $30,000 off of this budget. And then our library, the savings in salaries mostly. And so we're speaking of the library budget. I think that was really a result of change in administration, a change in the staffing, how they're, how they're staffing down there. As they showed their budget time, they're changing part-time, their Sunday hours. So I think it's, they have a difficult budget to. Put together.
Yeah. They were closes, right? Not all of the time, but obviously.
And I think they have different various sources that fund as well. And that changes, you know, they have friends of the library that contribute. And I wonder if that has to do with it, too.
Well, this is probably from the expenditures side of things. So I was able to balance the budget all through the expenditures. I tried to avoid any preference. So I really wanted to see that we have the number of the expenditures.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, those really the highlights of the habit to take.
I think you did a great job in going through that. And this is obviously part of the picture. This is not a negative picture because it's a net zero here, right? So the adjustments from one, you know.
And the big, I think the biggest. Most important part is that, you know, we did we, did we account for these things or making this, if we, if we didn't budget enough, are we doing that again at this 22? Am I going to be before you at the end of that same thing, telling the same story? And I don't believe so.
Structural deficit.
Right.
Julie, I'd just like to say that the grid format is excellent. I'm a big fan of grids and this is awesome and it's, it's clear where the original budget is from and how it's been amended and pulling it through. And what I love to see is a lot of it has to do with maintenance, which I think a lot of, you know, in government, we don't do a lot, enough in maintenance. But I hear in Bristol, it seems like we do a lot of maintenance, which is good in the long, long haul, it costs less, right? So, anyway, I'll make a motion to accept the proposed, the proposed budget transfers for fiscal year ending in June 30, 2021.
Second, any discussion?
Just briefly, you know, I was going to ask some questions, but I don't need to. No, I don't need to.
Okay.
Because the statement above and the statement under answer my questions.
So never let it be said to where we don't read all the documentation. So we had a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Julie. So just to remind everybody, we had put out to bid the property that the town owns, the home, the town owns on 10 Naomi. And we did, Mr. Administrator, I don't know if you wanted to speak to this, but we did settle on a buyer for that property. And this is so we can follow the steps, Mr. Solicitor, for next, so that final outcry to the public to make sure they understand what we're doing with public land. So it's just a call for public hearing, just need a motion of that effect.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
We received two bids today, one from our investment company in the amount of $148,550. We also received one from the Gabor Construction Company in the amount of $195,905.
Counsel?
Make a motion to refer this to the town administrator, that in the best interest of the town.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to refer to the administrator, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion to receive and file.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and file, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. GG6. So I asked GG6 to be pulled because Julie and I had a discussion earlier in the week and you were, it was another great news story. So and it was appropriate to pull it from consent to have specific dialogue about it, Julie.
So every two years we do our actuarial terms as an evaluation for our other. And this year, when they received our plan back, so two years ago when we did the evaluation, we were 49% funded, which for an OPEB trust is, is good. We, last year we do an, we do an update for audit purposes in between evaluations and we can jump up to about 16%. So we work girls. This year when we got our evaluation, we're up to 90%.
Wow.
So we're basically fully funded in our OPEB trust. And we talked about it at budget time that we could, for the first time, start taking distributions from the trust. So it's now providing a savings, we're helping to offset the cost of our retirement health insurance. And with a healthy funded trust, you get to the point where you're paying for all of your retirees, the non-mentioned benefits through the trust. And it's not being operated budget at all. That is our goal, actually, we're really thinking more of the first, this, we, the market returns will survive this last just a year. This is 7 July 1st, 2020, so I anticipate that the savings is going to increase further. The, the primary reason for it, there were actuarially assumption adjustments that were made. So there was a variety of things that happened that resulted in this 90%. But one of the largest was that they did a full deep dive and analysis on our claims cost of experience and on the reward expected future costs. And that was a significant part of the savings. We also reduced our assumed rate of return, which normally would come back to the opposite direction. But we moved it from 6.75% to 6.65%, which for a, I don't have plans, fairly conservative. So this is really in the world of OPEB and I assume this is a huge deal. And what it means for our budget going forward is that we're going to be able to continue, just maybe distributions from the trust offset those.
You are good or bad by comparison. Talk to us about what are other communities that would, what's, what's similar? We don't have to name the communities, but.
I don't, I can't say for certain, but I think we're ready to go in a state who is taking distribution from. I know there are one or two other communities that have OPEB trusts that may be funded as well as this, but they don't have OPEB benefits. They have, they don't provide health insurance and reimbursement. Where we have a, you know, a really robust OPEB plan for the police and our other business employees.
Pretty outstanding. Bristol Phoenix, I hope you're listening.
It's outstanding.
It's outstanding, it really is.
What would be the, with the range, like, you know, 30% to 90% or some places, you know, a 10 or everything.
I don't think the state has updated, I, I, last time I looked, I didn't see a, you know, recent study. I'll look again and see, and see maybe they have something there. Because they used to have that on the state website, you could see whatever the status was. Had it been updated in a while, but I'll check it here.
Would you update this council when you find that? Because I think it's a wonderful pride point. It's, it didn't happen by accident, none of this does, so.
And I certainly can't take credit for setting up the trust. Bristol was the first town in the state that had an OPEB trust and that was the job day.
Oh, wow, wow.
It's fun to see how much increases every year when you're doing a building this way. And we have a council and administration that is supporting, contributing, because remember for years we worked at your, you know, 350,000, 350,000. Went down to 75,000 last year, we're taking 300,000 off the top. Next this year we'll take more.
Outstanding. Yes, you do.
We would, we would, we would like to take more sometimes out of other things.
The flesh is weak, Julie.
I know, Mary, we try.
So could I have a receive and file, I'm sorry, Tony.
And the good thing about it is we still managing this right through the town, not through the trust. As, as they've taken on many other communities.
That was a great thing that I remember around this OPEB trusted, establishing a trust on that community who didn't have the capacity to jump on. That was great, though, for some.
Anything else? Could I have a motion or a receipt and file, please?
So moved.
All right. We had a motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary, Tony and Aaron. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Nice job, nice job. And we're in executive session.
Motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 4246585 relative to acquisition or lease of real property.
Can someone make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. So we are going into executive session and we will come back out to finish our meeting when that is completed.
Motion would be to close the executive session, seal the minutes and reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The minutes would reflect that no motions or votes were taken during executive session. Next motion is to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, good night, everyone, thank you.